I want to first start off by, of course, thanking our hosts, Seventh and West, Poncho and the staff here for always being so gracious and opening up the space to us. And then, of course, thank you so much, Lauren, for connecting us with Poncho. And so, before we get started with the candidate forum, we have a handful of clubs represented with us today. And so, first, I want to thank, of course, Richard, Christina, and Ruben for leading the planning of this event, who are all members of the board members for the East Bay Young Dems. So just kind of give it up for them. Right? It takes a lot of hard work. Richard, Christina, Ruben. So, thank you. So at this time, I just wanted to go over some of the voting procedures and announcements from the various clubs represented. So, for the East Bay Young Dems, please note that all voting will take place via Oba Vote, with the ballot closing at 11:59 this evening. And if you happen to have any questions about your membership status or voting, please contact Kelly, who is our membership chair. Kelly, raise your hand. All right. And then, in addition, we also have with us members from the Latina, Latine Young Dems. And so, the note here is that voting will take place via Slack. You'll have 24 hours to vote. And any questions related to membership, you can contact Ruben. Ruben, raise your hand. Awesome. Okay. And then, also with us today is the Oakland East Bay Democratic Club, Andrea. Did you want to come up and make an announcement?
So just real quick, we will be sending ballots as well. You have to be a paid member to vote and have attended three meetings at least in a year. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. And then, also with us is the Stonewall Club. I believe the representative to make some announcements is going to be Berkeley City Council Member Terry Taplin. Come on up.
Thank you. Hello. I'm too tall to use the stage, so I'll just stand out here. I'm representing the Stonewall. I want to let you all know that this September marks the return of our annual Pride Breakfast, our Oakland Pride. If you have questions about that, feel free to stop by. I'll be floating around in the back. Shane is here as well. And if folks are interested in helping us build LGBTQ power in the East Bay, feel free to become one of our members, feel free to join our board. I'm happy to stop and chat with anyone who's interested. And thank you all so much.
Thank you. And then, also with us is the Metropolitan Greater Oakland Democratic Club, and Alfred Too, you want to give a note?
Sure. Thank you, everybody. So, MGO Democratic Club, we are not going to be actually doing our vote until after the close of candidate filing in August. But you are welcome to join the club today, and then you will be a voting member at that time. And there's a QR code on some of the tables and paper signup forms at the table at the right. Thank you.
All right. And so now, for the fun part. So, each candidate will have three minutes to provide an introduction. That includes why they're running for the specific position. We also acknowledge that more time would be preferred, but we encourage everyone to stay following the candidate's statements to ask any questions that you may have, you know, one-on-one with the candidates. And so, we will be starting first with the Oakland City Council races. And so, that includes District Two, Four, and Six, followed by the City of Oakland Mayor Race. And so, that's how things will flow. Our timekeeper for the candidate's statements is Caleb. He's raising his hand there. And then, also in addition, we will be video recording each candidate's statement. And so, Ceylin is right here. So, you know, definitely look into the camera, and we will be posting that to our Facebook page. So, let's begin. So, our first, for the Oakland City Council candidates, our first candidate will be City of Oakland Council President, District Two Council Member Nikki Fortunato-Bass.
Good evening. Great to be here. My name is Nikki Fortunato-Bass. I am proud to be the representative for District Two on the Oakland City Council, also serving as council president. And I am running for reelection because I love Oakland and I am just getting started. So, for those of you who don't know, District Two, it's one of our most diverse districts. It includes a number of neighborhoods, including San Antonio, Eastlake, Chinatown, and Grand Lake. It is also the district with the most number of Asian Pacific Islander community members, and I'm proud to be the first Filipino-American council member for Oakland. I have lived in District Two for 25 years. I got my start organizing in the heart of my district in Chinatown, organizing immigrant Chinese garment workers, and I have been a social justice advocate and organizer for the past two decades. I got recruited to run, and I am so proud of the work that we have done together. These are hard times. Make no mistake, we are in the midst of a global pandemic, we are in the midst of an economic recession, a racial reckoning after George Floyd's murder, as well as rising anti-AAPI hate. But nonetheless, with our work together, in just my first year, I passed a $14 million program to help low-income tenants purchase their homes with land trusts. In my second year, we were able to make sure that we are reimagining public safety with a budget that deeply invests in violence prevention and alternative crisis response in our fire department, where we are already helping thousands of Oaklanders. And just this year, we are making sure that public land for public good is a reality. And city-owned private land in my district by the lake, we're housing dozens of unsheltered residents. And just this past week, we moved forward not one, but two affordable housing projects that will house families, unsheltered seniors, and transitional AIDS youth. And so, I'm really happy to move forward an agenda that's about affordable housing for all, that's about public safety for all, that's about investing in our community, our parks, our rec centers, new public bathrooms. And I am proud to be endorsed by the Wellstone Democratic Club, by Oakland Rising Action, by the Alameda Labor Council, by Assembly Member Mia Bonta, by five members of the Oakland City Council, countless neighborhood leaders, and everyday District Two representatives. And I would be honored to have the endorsement of the five Democratic Clubs that are here today. Thank you very much.
Also, a quick note to candidates, the hand signals for timing. You have one minute left, 30 seconds left, and 10, nine, et cetera. You get the deal. Thank you all.
Thank you, Caleb. And then, I also want to note that for the council races and the mayor race, we will be going in alphabetical order. Forgot to make that note. Okay. So up next, we will move to the District Four candidates. And so, our first speaking candidate will be community leader and business owner Nina Joyner, and I will invite them up to the stage.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is a lot of weight, so I needed to sit down and just see you all and just take this opportunity first before we start to give space. It's been a long time for me to get to this space right here as a, you know, a sex worker, sex worker advocate, queer porn producer, sex shop owner. It wasn't that I was supposed to be here, be liked. So I want to give space to little kids out there, to people out there who are actually bullied and can't get to this space right here, because we need everybody here. It's important that no one is left behind, and you have to do that. You have to give up your seat. So this seat signifies those people who can't be here as well. My name is Nina Joyner. I come from a strong union background. I'm from Las Vegas, so anybody understands Vegas. I've been in Oakland for 27 years, and 13 of those years, I've actually been a small business owner downtown Oakland, owning a sex shop. And it's been awesome. It's been awesome to see everything that's happening downtown when the lights were dark and no one was coming for me, because of my type of retail. I made it through because of the business community there. So it's very important. I got to talk about what's going on in the city. You know, I got three issues. Let's get those off first. We got housy unhoused, but we also have housing insecurity. We need to make sure that we have that going on for people as well. We also have public safety. Public safety is an issue in the city of Oakland. I used to have women run into my shop because there was nobody else open, and we were there, so we would take them home. I need these infrastructure, these lights over here fixed. I also need the sidewalks out there fixed, so differently-able people can actually use the sidewalk. I need those things done, and I believe that I can get those things done. Not only that, fire safety, because I'm in District Four. I moved there simply because it's a park for me, running, biking, hiking. Those things are very important. I want to make sure, as a business owner, I talk to business people in my district well. It's very important. Small businesses, we're not getting the money. And I'm a sex shop. I know I didn't get the money. So I know that the businesses out there are having a hard time. I want to make sure that people in my community know that they can have somebody in the flatlands that look like them, come from their same experiences, use public transportation, and do the same things that they do, which is sleep at night with the gunshots. I'm here to make a difference. I know that I can make a difference. And it's been too long for me to get here, and I want to make sure it's not hard for other people as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so, our next District Four City Council candidate, Social Justice Attorney Janani Ramachandran.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much to all the East Bay Democratic Clubs for organizing this forum today. My name is Janani Ramachandran, and it's an honor to be here as a lifelong Democrat, as a native of the East Bay, and as the daughter of immigrants from a small village in southern India. And I am honored to be seeking your support today. Like many of you, I am running for Oakland City Council because, like many of you, I am sick and tired of the dysfunction. I am tired of the infighting, of the insider political games that has led us to what we are experiencing now, which is an unprecedented homelessness crisis, school closures, roads in the worst conditions they've ever been in modern history, gun fatalities and pedestrian deaths on the daily, an exodus of small business owners and longtime Oaklanders who have had enough. In my work as a legal aid attorney, most recently at Centro Legal de la Raza, I have seen on a daily basis why the status quo is failing our communities. In my work as a legal aid attorney, I have represented multiple tenants being brutally evicted from their homes in the middle of a global pandemic. I support survivors of domestic violence denied a modicum of safety that they deserve. I represent low-wage day laborers who have their wages continuously stolen with no legitimate recourse. So I see on a daily basis why the system is broken. When I served on the City of Oakland Public Ethics Commission, that was a real window of insight into understanding who holds power in this city and why our communities are continuously left out. I saw the bad development deals, the corruption, the mismanagement, the greed, and that is why it is time to demand radical accountability. It is time to elect the bold leaders who will ask the difficult questions of where our money is going. It is time to elect the responsive leaders who will always prioritize the people first, not those who will cower to the power of corporate dollars. It is time to elect leaders with heart. And I seek your endorsement today as the only lifelong Democrat in this city council race. I seek your endorsement as the only young Dem who would be on city council and the first-ever queer API councilwoman in the state of California. But above all, I seek your support today because together, we are the good troublemakers that are going to make a difference. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. And so now, we will move on to the District Six City Council candidates. And so, first up is Peralta Community College Trustee Kevin Jenkins.
Love you too. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. East Bay Young Dems, fellow Democratic Clubs, thank you so much for hosting this. My name is Kevin Jenkins. For those who do not know me, I'm a Peralta trustee. I represent East Oakland on the Peralta Community College Board. I'm a lifelong Oakland resident. I worked in Alameda County Supervisor Keith Carson's office for three years. I have a commitment to public safety. I've served on the Alameda County Public Health Commission. I have served on the Peralta Community College Bond Oversight Committee. And I'm bringing that experience to serve District Six. District Six has been left behind. When I take my son to school, we have to drive by mattresses, we have to drive by couches, we have to drive by, we have to walk by feces and urine, and no child should have to experience that in Oakland. What happens when we normalize that in a child's mind? So I'm running for change in District Six. District Six has been left behind. There's no economic development in District Six, no small retail in District Six, so I'm running to bring those things to District Six. There's a number of exciting projects that are occurring in District Six, the Calisim Development, what that's going to look like. So I'm running to ensure that that project brings economic development to the district, it brings services to the district. I'm also running on public safety. There's a lot of public safety issues in District Six, and we want to focus on solving those issues. I saw my friend Nina up here, and she was talking about her store downtown Oakland. I won't go into downtown Oakland without leaving all my windows down. I've had five windows broken out. And so, that's an issue of public safety, right? I'm not going down there, so there's a lack of economic development. We also need to ensure that our schools are taken care of. Parker Elementary is being closed in East Oakland. One minute? One minute left?
Yeah.
Okay. Parker Elementary is being closed in East Oakland. We need to make sure that our schools are open, vibrant, and available for those who need them. Since I have one minute left, I'm going to give you a list of my endorsers. I am happy to be endorsed by Councilmember Shane Tao, Councilmember-at-Large Rebecca Kaplan, former District Six councilperson and Alameda County Supervisor Nate Miley, former councilmember, Deslee Brooks, Wellstone Democratic Club, Alameda County Building Trades, and a host of other. Please visit my website at JenkinsForOakland.com. Again, that's JenkinsForOakland.com.
Thank you so much. Okay. And so then, the next candidate running for District Six City Council is Yakuza Zazaboy.
Thank you all for having me. My name is Yakuza Zazaboy. I've been in Oakland and more specifically in District Six since about 1996. I'm running because it means a lot to me. It means a lot to me when I watch the news and everybody talks about our district as if it's a failure. We have a lot of good stuff going on in our district. We're part of the reason why so many people love our district. We're out there. While some people might want to call and complain about what's going on, we're some of the people that actually step out of our house and do something about it. This stuff means so much to us that, one of the things, you know, yeah, sorry about that. One of the things that I want to tell you about is my experience first with education in Oakland. For some of the things that are going on right now, we're not going to see a change if we don't focus on our education for our young. I guarantee you, we'll be having the same exact conversation 10 years from now if we don't double down on what we're doing for these kids. We can't keep playing with their lives. That's what we're doing. I'm not a politician, but I do own a business. I am a father, I am a brother, and I'm an uncle. I'm out here every single day. We're not giving speeches in our community, we're actually doing the work, and that's what I'm here to do. I'll give you an example of some of the things that we have to think about. When my son was five years old, I couldn't wait to sign him up into OUSD. But we had things to think about, like what was the quality of the education going to be at that school? That's what parents are concerned about. All of the other politic and bickering, we don't have time for that stuff. I took my son to a school that I had to drive pretty far away to get him to, but this is the commitment that we are trying to do as parents for our kids out here. We don't have time for the politics. As a business owner in East Oakland for 12 years, we called the city to try to help us with so many things, it just did not happen. So we didn't have time to sit down and wait for somebody to come and save us. We had to get out there and do it ourselves. And this is what I'm bringing to our district, is somebody who's willing to get out there and do it myself if I have to. So we can sit around and we can clap and cheer, but we got work to do. I'm Yakuza Zazaboy, and I'm running for District Six.
All right. Thank you so much. And so, I know we're really grateful for all of the city council candidates that showed up. Why don't we just give them a round of applause? All right. And so now, at this time, we will move into, oh, I do want to note, I hope that all the city council candidates can hang around to the end to really, you know, talk and engage with members of the various Democratic Clubs, so hopefully we can chat later. And so now, we'll move into the candidates that are running for Oakland, City of Oakland Mayor. And so, once again, we will be going in alphabetical order. And so, the first candidate that we will call up to the stage is a former Oakland City Council Member Ignacio De La Fuente.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And first, I really appreciate the time to give in all of us. Anybody that runs for office deserves an applause, because a lot of people talk and a few people walk, and I think that's what makes a difference. My name is Ignacio De La Fuente. I had the privilege of serving you in the city council for 21 years, from 1992 to 2012, 2012, excuse me. And I can tell you that that privilege injected something on me, injected the fact that Oakland is one of those incredible places and cities in the world, that unless we actually really understand and really accept the fact it'd be real about the problems that we're facing, then we cannot fix it. My grandma used to say that before you fix a problem, you have to act with the reality, the reality to understand that it is a problem. And I think that's what I believe is one of the problems that we're facing right now, is a crisis in Oakland. I've been out of office for 10 years, and I can tell you that what I see in Oakland is something that I cannot just stand by and watch. Oakland is a place that I can do a lot better for all of us. And unfortunately, what's happening now is that we're ignoring, even the basics. I'm running back for office because I believe that we can do better, especially crime and the homeless encampments that are probably destroying a lot of our neighborhoods. We have to do something better. We have to have a better plan in order to deal with that. We have the responsibility to help as many people as we can, and not at the expense of other people, not at the expense of businesses, not at the expense of all of us that live in the city. I think we have ignored some of the problems that we face. And when you ignore the problems, they grow, and when they grow, it's more difficult to deal with them. I'm running with two basic goals, to try to make the city safe, and to try to make sure that we have an actual long-term plan. We deal with the homeless issue, we deal with homeless encampments that are really impacting our businesses, impacting our city. And I'm very proud of the fact that I work with many commercial districts in that area. When you look at Chinatown, Chinatown used to be a vibrant city, a vibrant district in the city of Oakland. You go to Chinatown at four o'clock today, and it's deserted. There's nobody in the streets. Why? Because they're afraid. Why? Because they cannot be on the streets. So I can tell you that I'm running just for two basic things, to make the city safe and to clean up the city so all of us can live in a better environment and all of us can help as many people as we can. I'm not running for anything else, and I'm not looking at any other future offices. I'm running just for Oakland Mayor, just to get things done in Oakland, nothing else. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. I'm done. That was some time. I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right. And so, call it next to the stage will be a representative for candidate Greg Hodge, and that will be Dean Hassan.
Peace. Good afternoon. Bueno, star des. Assalamualaikum. What they do, what's up with it, what's happening, all that good stuff. I'm Dean Hassan. I'm here to talk about Baba Greg Hodge. For as long as I've been alive, and don't try to guess my age, just as north to late 1900s, but for as long as I've been alive, he's given himself to the city in just about every way that you could imagine, as an advocate, as an attorney, as an activist, as a co-founder of Wose and Ela Omade African Center School, as a former school board member, as an artist, as a practitioner in the spiritual community, as a man, as a Baba. And right now, we need all those hats, right? But I think more important than that, what we need, what people want to see, is who we are when we take the hats off. I think people want to see that we are who we say we are and we're going to do what we say that we're going to do. And I'm here, what I want you all to leave with, what I want you to hear, if you didn't hear nothing else that I said, is that I've been knowing this man for over 10 years personally, not as a coworker, not as a direct report, not as a colleague. Lived downstairs from him for a couple of years, so you know, I seen it all and heard it all. And this man is who he says he is. And he's going to do what he says he's going to do. And so, I want to salute everybody here, because like is been said, this is a testament to the love that people have for this city, that you all are willing to put yourself out and try to make a contribution to this city that's given us so much. I know it's a transplant from Miami, it's given me a lot over the past 10 years. But again, I just want to reiterate, Baba Greg is who he says he is, and we need all those hats that he can bring to this position. Appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. And so, our next candidate for mayor, current District Six City Council Member Lauren Taylor.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, thank you to the East Bay Young Dems and all the other co-hosts who are here and put this event on. I want to acknowledge everybody here in the audience, and my peers who are running for office, because we are all stepping up to serve the town that I love, and so I want to acknowledge that and appreciate it. So yes, my name is Lauren Taylor. I'm a third-generation Oaklander, product of this town, and I'm running to become its next mayor. I'm not a career politician. I'm a biomedical engineer turned management consultant and entrepreneur. And I'm grateful to be able to have served over the past several years as the District Six Council Member, bringing real results through City Hall. As an outsider, a non-career politician, I know that this town needs a strong, effective, progressive, and pragmatic leader, and that's what I will be for Oakland. My grandparents moved here in the 40s from the segregated South in order to create a new life for themselves and future generations, their dream. I'm standing here as that dream fulfilled. Unfortunately, that dream does not exist for too many Oaklanders today. We have first-generation immigrants who dream of coming here to create a better life. We have local entrepreneurs who dream that their ideas can be turned into value that sustains themselves and their families. We have East Oakland parents who dream a future for their kids that is not saddled by the zip code that they live in. That's the dream that I am stepping up to make sure we deliver, because we've been on the verge of our potential my entire life here in Oakland, and I'm ready to make sure that we deliver on it. I'm grateful that over the past several years, I've been able to deliver real results for District Six and the city as a whole. In the wake of the tragic murders of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor, I stepped up to co-create and co-chair the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force, delivering a true set of recommendations that ensure that we would bring the most equitable, just public safety system while keeping our residents safe. I'm grateful to have been able to partner with many nonprofit housing organizations to help bring affordable housing to this city, including over 800 units of affordable housing in the pipeline. housing in the pipeline in District Six, a district that hadn't had development previous to that. And let's talk about Liberation Park, a formerly vacant lot at the corner of 73rd and Foothill in East Oakland that was growing weeds, collecting litter, and now it's an urban oasis. We host the Akoma Market, a certified farmer's market in East Oakland. Hopefully, you guys have been there to visit that. So yes, we've delivered real results. I'm grateful to be able to roll up sleeves with you and partnership with you to deliver results over rhetoric, progress over politics, and I invite you to join me and so many others, including Chairwoman Elaine Brown from the Black Panther Party, including Pastor Jackie Thomas, Allen Temple Baptist Church, including so many others. Please check out my website, Lauren, at LaurenForOakland.com. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, and so then our, our next candidate running for mayor is District Four City Council Member Sheng Tao.
Ladies and gentlemen, round of applause for Row. Great job. And thank you so much to Seventh West. This is where I had my kickoff. And so it's a little sweet gift that we're here today. As you have heard, my name is Sheng Tao, and I currently am the Council President Pro Tem, and I represent District Four, running to be Oakland's next mayor. You see, I'm a daughter of refugees. My parents landed here in the United States in 1979, and so we grew up really poor. Social services, Medi-Cal, the homeworks, not having a car to drive anywhere, but walking and recycling cans. And I tell you this because that is incredibly important. As the many of us in the City of Oakland, we are feeling that way right now. Housing is too expensive. We can't afford to live here in a single-family homes anymore. We are seeing multiple families in a single-family home. And not just that, but we are talking about how do we actually implement the vision of what Oakland can be? Because we hear it way too often. Oakland can be this. Oakland can be that. But we need a leader. We are at a pivotal point in the City of Oakland where we need a leader who can implement those visions, implement our values, have the experience, have not just the experience, but the effectiveness and the track record to prove it. And I can tell you that I have all of that. I've worked as a staffer to Councilmember at-large for many years, ran in 2018, and now I'm a council member. I understand the bottlenecks at City Hall. I understand that we must not only talk about affordable housing, but implement it. And that is why I'm so excited that there's going to be 197 affordable units. We are breaking ground in District Four above 580, because I truly believe that if you want to live above 580, you can, and you should. And that is why I've worked with the private developer to make sure that that becomes affordable housing units on that lot. Not just that, but we need a leader who can bring people together. We in Oakland, we are passionate people. How we push the city forward, we have different ways of doing it. So we need a leader who can actually bring people together. And that is what I did with the progressive business tax. It is not fair that all business tax in the City of Oakland right now are all the same rate. And so I worked together with Council President Bass, Councilmember Five. I worked together with big chambers, small business, and labor, brought them all together, a historical meeting. And guess what? We walked out of there, and we all agreed. We had a press conference, and we all agree that we can work together so that the City of Oakland can have more services for their trash pickup, illegal dumping, and much more. Effectiveness and results-driven is incredibly important, and that is why I am the only mayor or candidate who invested a historical amount of $18 million into violence prevention, because of course we want to prevent crimes before they happen. As your next mayor, I will do more than $18 million in violence prevention, as I have proven that before. None of the other mayor or candidates have done that. And so what I am going to do is allow for there to be and implement pipelines and pathways for our young people, because we know that when we put money in their pockets and we keep them busy, that's how we keep ourselves safe. Thank you all so much. My name is Sheng Tao. I hope to have your endorsement.
Thank you so much. And so before we, before I invite the next candidate up, I wanted to check in to make sure that the video is teed up for Councilmember Reed, because otherwise I can call their representative up, because I want to go in alphabetical order. So if... Okay, so I think, uh, why don't we just go ahead and go with the District Seven representative that is here for Councilmember Reed?
Good evening, everyone. I will not be before you long. My name is Tassian Kwameleli. I am not Triva Reed. I am a District Seven resident and a friend of Triva. Unfortunately, she is unable to be here with you tonight, so I told her I would be happy to bring greetings on her behalf as she is running to be your next Oakland mayor. So again, thank you to all that put this event tonight. She is so honored and excited to hopefully be your next mayor again. I know Triva personally. She is a leader. She is a friend, and she is filled with compassion. Although she is one of the shortest members on the council, having only served for almost two years, in the two years she, she has been on the council, one thing that she says is she understands that it's gonna take being in a higher position to really move this city forward, to really serve the people, to serve the residents of Oakland, to really serve at a higher level, to really serve Oklanders and give people the, um, the leadership, to really give them the services and the, um, the things that they need. So what I would really do is encourage you to visit her website, www.readforOakland.com. There are cards on the table in the back. Also, one of her campaign members, Armand, raise your hand. I don't see you right now. He was here. He's right there. He has cards where you can get in contact with her directly and reach out to her directly. It has her cellphone number. She will answer her phone where you can get in contact with her and ask questions about her campaign, about her vision for the city, on key issues that matter to her. Thank you so much, and wish you all the best.
Thank you. And then I guess I'll just, I'll make the note that the video that was submitted, we will, we will be sure to post it to our Facebook along with all the other videos as well. And so, uh, the next candidate that I will invite up to the stage is ACLU Attorney Alyssa Victory.
Good evening, everybody. That was a little weak, y'all. I'm the last person, then we get back to drinking, mingling. Good evening, everybody. That sounds more like Young Dems, right? If you don't know me, I'm Alyssa Villanueva-Victory. I am your elected AD-18 A-Dem delegate to the Democratic Party. I was elected in 2021 on an independent slate, raised $0, registered people to vote Dem for the very first time. And I am a proud product of Oakland, daughter of Oakland. I'm running because I'm Oakland's past, present, and future. I'm raised in North Oakland, was raised by my mother, who is a teacher. She did early childhood education. She's taught in Oakland. She's taught in Berkeley. She's taught for Alameda County Head Start. But we also didn't have a lot because she was working on a teacher's salary. My whole family, me, my little sister, became homeless at the end of high school. We were evicted from our home in North Oakland. I slept on floors. I slept on people's homes in El Cerrito in San Francisco, commuting an hour plus to get to school. I attended Berkeley High School, and I'm a proud alum because our public schools in Oakland were in crisis decades ago. We've had the same problem cycling in our city. But I was activated young through my church to provide public service at True Vine Missionary Baptist, which is right here in West Oakland. I was activated young with Oakland Youth Together to speak truth to power, to work for educational equity, and for equitable public resources, and even to protect our immigrant students in public education. I am a justice champion and defender, and have been my entire life. I represent Oakland everywhere I go. I represented Oakland at UC San Diego, where I helped to found the UC San Diego Black Resource Center when I was just a student. Yes, I need some claps for that, the Black Resource Center at UC San Diego. I came back to Oakland knowing then that I was going to run for mayor, but I knew I wasn't ready. So I went to law school. I'm the only practicing attorney in this race. My degree is concentrated in government. I've been advising our city, our electeds, our county, our state, our commissions on how to do their jobs, how to write the policy that they want, how to legislate the laws that they want. They come to me as an expert. They come to me for advice. And I've been working with them, but also working with our community coalitions, working with the Bay Area Black Worker Center. I teach at San Quentin State Prison, and I'm also a union lawyer and a union member. I am a union attorney for CWA 9415, which represents workers throughout the state of California and into Hawaii. I not just have the lived experience of being a renter, being formerly homeless, being the first black woman who would be elected in this city, being the only young Democrat in this race, but I also have the professional expertise, the policy, legal expertise, to make our strong mayor system work for us. I'm running on public banking, public housing, public safety, public trust, public transit. I'm running on high-quality public services. I'm running to represent you all. I look forward to your endorsement and your vote. My table is right here in the back where you can get more information.
Awesome. Thank you, Alyssa. All right, I think we should, you know, give a huge round of applause to all of the candidates, all of the mayor candidates that showed up this evening. All right, and so, you know, that was the fun part, and now we all get to kind of mix and mingle. I know that, you know, all the candidates shared some amazing highlights, some things about themselves. And so for that, we are grateful. I did want to mention that we will, there is a video that Councilmember Reed submitted, and so we'll get that running. Anyone that's interested in viewing it, it'll be displayed on the screen. And then at this time, I'm gonna pass it over to East Bay Young Dems President Christina to close us out.
Thank you. Can we see the video right now? Is it on? Not yet. Okay, so we'll play that as soon as we can get it to work. But I just wanted to give everyone a big thank you. Thank you to all the candidates for coming to meet with us today. Thank you for all the clubs who are collaborating with us. It's been an awesome experience. I also want to do a shout-out for elected officials that have come tonight. From Berkeley, we have Mayor Jussie Aragín. We have Berkeley City Councilmember Terry Taplin, as well as the Oakland City Council members who are also candidates tonight: Lauren Taylor, Nikki Fortuna-Bass, and Sheng Tao. Emeryville City Councilmember Courtney Welch. Berkeley Red Board, we have several people: Xavier Johnson, James Chang, Sully Alfred, Bar Director Robert Rayburn. And we have Oakland School Board Mike Hutchinson, and Peralta Community College Board Kevin Jenkins. We have a couple people who are running for other races here. A couple of them are former Young Democrats, and they're collecting signatures. So Stefan, where are you? Where's Stefan? I saw him earlier. Stefan, wherever you are is collecting signatures, as well as Alfred. Alfred is a former, uh, former E B W D president. So go, go sign, help them, help them get enough signatures so that they can run for their races. And I also want to give a shout-out to Pamela Price, who's here tonight. You can also go talk to Pamela. So I encourage you all to go continue mingling. I know we like to talk with each other because we haven't seen our friends and fellow Dem Club members in a while, but please go find a candidate and ask them, ask them why they're running. Ask them what, you know, what are the important things, you know, aside from what they've already said, but make sure you talk to them. That's what we want to do tonight. I think that's all I have to say. And hopefully, we'll get the video up and running. Is it, how's it looking? It's good? Okay, so then I think we just need to press play. This will close out the night, and then we can all, you know, go, go get more drinks, have more fun. Thank you, everyone.